The February 13, 2012 council meeting to order if you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would a clerk please call the roll?
Here.
Lamb?
Here.
Rose?
Here.
Shields?
Here.
Simpson?
Burdell Ware?
Here.
Coy?
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of January 23, 2012 as submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Burdell Ware?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee, we previously had a Finance Committee prior to this meeting, and it was a lengthy one. Hopefully, we don't have two-hour Finance meetings in the future, but it seems like we have some good discussion, which we appreciate. The next Finance meeting is two weeks from today, probably at 5:30 downstairs. Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening?
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Madam, Mr. President. I'm sorry. No report this evening on public properties. You're the first one.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Special Legislation Committee, Mrs. Burdell Ware?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening.
Streets and Sidewalk Committee, Mr. Simpson. He's not here, but there is a Streets and Sidewalk Committee scheduled on February 23 at 5:30.
Correct.
Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Colosar?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a Water and Utilities meeting scheduled that same day, the 23rd, which is a Thursday at 6:30, and we're going to talk about the utility rate reviews recommendation on water rates.
Thank you, Mr. Colosar. Request for council action for the Finance Committee. We have 1221, All Hazard and Flood Mitigation Plan Update with Jeff Harriman. 1223, Satisfaction of Lean for 1010 Oak Street, fiscal year '04 for the CHIP grant. 1224, Budget Amendments. 1225, Advance Request for Medina Municipal Airport. Addendum to 1211, Police Reorganization. 1226, Collaboration with Schools, A Grant Study. 1227, Medina Municipal Airport Runway Rehabilitation. 1228, Design and Plan Preparation for the Mellett Park Improvements. 1229, Accepting Friends at the Cemetery Donation for the Mausoleum. 1230, Purchase of a Stump Grinder for Forestry. 1231, Utilizing Medina Township Ballfields. 1232, Bids Lake Road Reconstruction Phase One. 1233, Bids for Parkview Drive Culvert Replacement. 1234, Final Resolution for ODOT 212 Urban Paving State Route Three. 1235, Easement Parkview Drive Culvert Replacement Project. And 1236, Utility Rate Review Commission Recommendations. One item for Streets and Sidewalk Committee is 1222, Sidewalk Construction, Maintenance, and Repair. Reports from municipal officers, Mayor Hanwell?
Thank you, President Coy. This coming weekend is the annual ICE Festival on Medina Public Square. It's going to be February 17, 18, and 19, with President's Day being Monday. Information on the event is available at the Main Street website, which is www.mainstreetmedina.com. On Saturday, April 21, some local church leaders in Medina are hosting what's being called a Big Day of Serving. This is a national event where they put together groups for different cities, and Medina was selected this year as one of those cities to bring volunteers here. They do anything, any community service activities from park cleanups, minor home repairs, exterior painting, yard work, et cetera, for elderly, disabled, or those unable to do so. Anybody that's interested in having work performed can contact Dawn Conwell at my office here, 722-9020. Her email is DConwell@MedinaOH.org. Or if you're interested in volunteering to serve, you can also go to the website, www-bigdayofserving.com. And last, I'm serving on a committee to plan the National Day of Prayer events for this year. That takes place on Thursday, May 3. There'll be three events, again, a Mayor's Prayer Breakfast at Williams on the Lake from 7:00 a.m. to 8:30. The guest speaker will be Medina County Commissioner Adam Friedrich. Noon prayer service on the square and an evening prayer service at the New Heartland Community Church at 3,400 Weymouth Road. That starts at 7:00 p.m., usually lasts an hour to an hour and a half. More details as we get closer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have an announcement to make sure that all residents are aware of filing city income tax return. We have some opportunities if any residents would like assistance with the forms. Those opportunities are Saturday, March 3 from 9:00 to 4:00; Tuesday, March 13 from 9:00 to 4:00; Wednesday, April 4 from 1:00 to 8:00; and Saturday, April 14. That's the last Saturday before the filing deadline from 9 until 4. All of those will be at the Recreation Center on Weymouth Road. I'd like to thank Mike Wright and the Recreation Center for hosting that. We have that available if anybody needs help with the forms. If you need the forms, we have those here in the Finance Office, and those dates and times should be up on the screen, or if you need that, that's come with the water bills, or we have additional forms at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Mr. Huber, Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Baraduti, please, chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mrs. Wright, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to give council an update. As you know, we had hired Nick Arbel for our economic development part-time intern, and he's been working on conducting research, collecting data, and preparing an inventory list of vacant properties and buildings in our industrial, commercial, and retail districts. He's been making a lot of progress, and he is now integrating the sites into the Jobs Ohio Information and Database at the state. And over the past couple of weeks, we've seen an uptick in the amount of leads that are coming from the state for projects, and we've been able to submit on three of those projects. And what's interesting, when these come in, there's a very short turnaround time, and there's usually a lot of information that they need. So by having this information that he's pulled together, we've been able to respond pretty quickly and at least get our name in the hat. So just wanted to give you an update with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take a moment, as I do several times a year, to remind the residents to make sure they have working smoke detectors, but I'd like them to go one step further and actually take it down and take a look at the date. The latest studies have shown that they're only reliable for about 10 years, and after that, the serviceability drops dramatically, and they probably won't function by 11th or 12th year. If they have any questions or need help getting up to take a look at that, have them call the station. We have batteries for them also, but if they need questions answered, they can call Fire Station 1 at 330-725-1772.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next scheduled Advisory Board meeting is this Thursday, February 16, at the Rec Center at 7:30 in the morning. Now, I'd like to take a minute to talk about the Rec Center. It always amazes me every time I'm given a tour of the Rec Center, and a member states that they've never been in the facility before. I can honestly say I can't remember the last time during one of those tours that the member or the, I'm sorry, the patron didn't say something to the effect of, wow, this place is amazing. It really gives me a sense of pride to know how really great the facility is and how it adds to the quality of life of our community members. We offer all kinds of programs for every type of personality. Currently, Medina TV is in the process of showcasing our facility and some of these programs on the city's YouTube site. Recently added is a great video of our aquatics manager, Darlene Duncan, talking about some of the aquatic classes we offer. If you have not seen our community recreation center before, please come in for a tour or go to our new YouTube site and check out our videos. I think you'll be amazed at what we have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Vogel, Building Official?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's become important in recent years for businesses to possess a valid certificate of occupancy for the buildings they use for insurance financing and licensing purposes, just to name a few. Because many of the property owners here in Medina are not in possession of a certificate of occupancy for their buildings, the new business owner runs into an immediate stumbling block. Luckily, the Medina City Building Department can help. The Ohio Building Code allows the building official to issue certificates of occupancy to existing buildings if the owner requests one in writing. If I find that the use of the building has previously existed, and there are no pending violations or safety hazards, I can issue a valid certificate of occupancy for any structure in the city of Medina. I team up with the Medina Planning and Fire Departments in this endeavor so that businesses can be assured that the use they propose is sanctioned by all interested parties. To start the process, the new business owner should submit an application that we will provide. A letter of intent and a simple floor plan sketch with the main use areas labeled will also be required. Once the zoning use is approved, I conduct an inspection with the fire marshal to establish that no serious hazards are present. If no serious hazards are present, I issue a valid certificate of occupancy for the building to complete the process. Any and all businesses in Medina, new or old, should possess a valid certificate of occupancy for the building they inhabit. Please stop in, and we can assist you in obtaining one. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. An update on a couple recently awarded projects. Our traffic signal improvements, which will provide connectivity between the city's traffic signal system and the railroad's warning devices. That project has been awarded, and contracts are currently being signed. That will provide the connectivity between the two systems at three different crossings that are adjacent to signalized intersections. When completed, this will allow us to finally put the signal at Huntington and Smith into full operation. Also, last week, we accepted bids for the Water Main Project on East Smith and Smoke Rise. We're reviewing the bids now. The low bidder was well within the project estimate. I look to award that project and have it completed by the middle of June. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regardless of this past weekend's snowfall, the city street budget is doing very well. Looking at our records and comparing to previous years, the overtime for street employees is almost three times less than it's been in the previous three winters. With respect to salt, we have not quite used a third of what we've applied in the previous winters as well. We're not out of the woods yet, however, there is light at the end of the tunnel. Six weeks, maybe, hopefully. Secondly, I'd like to acknowledge and take this opportunity to thank local business Chuck's Customs and Trailer Sales on West Smith Road, specifically John Kronik, the manager, for working with Marty Warcola from Myers Products for their donation to the city of Medina for the senior snowplow program. The donation has a value of $5,233, and this value includes parts, accessories, and installation of the same. It was a snowplow that was donated and installed in one of our city pickup trucks. It's very nice to see the businesses getting involved with our community programs. Also, this afternoon, BOC, Board of Control, formally voted to accept this donation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson, Park and Recreation Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Notices, Communications, and Petitions. We have two of them this evening. Confirmation of mayoral appointment to historic preservation board. Lio Morris, a property owner, expires 12/31/15.
Move to approve the mayoral appointment?
Second.
Any discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Burdell Ware?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Confirmation of council's appointments. We have two for the Audit Committee. Brian Har, Accounting Representative, for a term expiring 12/31/15, and Bert Humple, the Business Representative, for a term expiring 12/31/15.
Move to approve council appointments?
Second.
Any discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll?
Shields?
Yes.
Burdell Ware?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Unfinished business? We have none. Introduction of Visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the right front microphone and state their name and address so that it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or a voted majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council? Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 18-12, an ordinance authorizing the Finance Director to make certain fund advances.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to ask for an amendment on this. If you look at ordinance 24-12, where we're approving the bids for this project, it's $48,000, and also on ordinance 26-12, where we're approving the ordinance, approving the appropriation, it's $48,000. But on the advance, it was 40, and I think that's just a typo that got in there, so if we can change that to 48. And then, to explain that, I know council's aware, but for people who might not be, an advance is where we loan money from one of our funds to another, so it's essentially an internal loan, and this will cover the cost of this addition for us to be able to sell jet fuel at the airport, which we're hoping to recover through additional revenues as Mr. Huber explained at the Finance Meeting downstairs. So then, we'll repay it once those revenues start to come in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Shields?
I move to amend ordinance 18-12, as noted by Mr. Durham?
Second.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Would a clerk please call the roll on the amendment?
Coy?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Burdell Ware?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, six zero.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would a clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Burdell Ware?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 18-12 passes six zero.
Ordinance 19-12, an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of $9,000 to Medina County Society for the Preservation of Cruelty to Animals, the SPCA for Animal-Related Services.
Move to approve?
Second, but it looks like there's a correction needed on this, too.
I see that, too.
Well, Mayor, can you explain a little bit, and then we'll do an amendment?
The request is for an expenditure to, for the city to contract with the Medina County SPCA for assistance with nuisance animals, injured animals, animals at large. As council's aware, the public may not be, but we do not have an animal control officer here in the city of Medina. The police officers work to pick up some strays, to take them out to the dog pound, but whereas most cities have an animal control officer, we don't. So the expenditure is cheaper for us to contract these services with the SPCA, and they've provided these services for a substantial period of time, and we have a good working relationship with them.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I move that we amend ordinance 19-12 by modifying Section 1 to read 9,000 instead of 9,500.
Second on modification.
Any discussion on a modification? Would a clerk please call the roll on the amendment?
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Burdell Ware?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Any further discussion on the ordinance?
I would just like to add to what Mayor Hanwell said, that the SPCA has for years provided a significant service to the city at a very reasonable rate, an important service. And we didn't give them quite as much as they asked for, but it was quite a bit more than we have given them typically. And I have noticed in the last week, a number of organizations that are making an effort to collect money to help to provide funds to the SPCA, aside from whatever they get from the government. And I think that's great, because they do provide a real service, not only to Austin, the community, but really to the animals, too, that they help.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Coy?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Burdell Ware?
Yes.
Ordinance 19-12 passes six zero.
Ordinance 20-12, an ordinance amending Sections 3102B5, 3105, and 3107 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to municipal court part-time building custodian.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I see the emergency clause has been requested, and I move to add that at this time.
Second adding the emergency clause.
Any discussion on the emergency clause, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. There's no one here on behalf of the court, but I can explain for the public's benefit. They have a full-time custodian at the court. The full-time custodian has some medical issues that does not permit them to work for what they perceive to be an extended period of time, but yet their needs for a custodian remain while that person is out being treated. Therefore, they're requesting a part-time building custodian to fill in that vacancy, and will only fill the part-time position when the full-time person is not available. And the reason they need the emergency clause is this presented itself to the court several weeks ago, and they've had to backfill this position and need this approved as soon as possible.
Thank you. And it's my understanding that the carry forward funds will be used to fund this position during a period of time in which the full-time custodian is vacant, and the court has ample carry forward funds to cover this cost.
That's my understanding as well. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any more discussion, further discussion on the emergency clause? Would a clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Burdell Ware?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would a clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Burdell Ware?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Ordinance 20-12 passes six zero.
Ordinance 21-12, an ordinance amending ordinance number 20107, passed December 10, 2007, a subscription agreement with Medina Municipal Software Corporation for Permit Software for the Planning Department and Engineering Departments.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the software that's used by planning, building, and engineering for the permits, for inspections. The ordinance is for $10,800, which was passed at Board of Control contingent upon council's authorization. The reason it's before council is because the agreement had to be modified. There were some provisions in there that had been in there in the previous agreements, but came to light when we were looking to renew the contract. They've agreed to modify that agreement to remove or modify the conditions that the law department requested, and that's why it's back before council.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Burdell Ware?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 21-12 passes six zero.
Ordinance 22-12, an ordinance amending ordinance number 63-11, passed May 9, 2011, relative to the design and construction of an addition to the city services garage located at 781 West Smith Road.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Pacoli? Mr. Patton?
Thank you. This, as it reads in the title, is related to the construction of the addition to the Mechanics Bay at the service garage, as well as the new facility to house the street department equipment. The contract as passed by council is for $780,000. We had, the final construction cost is $839,128. The difference is due mainly to a couple of items. First, water line extension. We extended a six-inch water line back to within a couple hundred feet of the property in order to accommodate a hydrant. We did structural improvements to the existing building, as well as adding to the new Mechanics Bay some crane rails in anticipation of a future crane for that area. There are also fees for sanitary and water connections that initially the city had hoped to use city forces to complete, but due to time commitments and other commitments at that time of year, the contractor had to complete because the city weren't available.
Thank you. Just as an update, the city council had the opportunity to take a tour of the new addition to the city garage and the new building that houses all of the street material, the leaf vacs, and also the plow trucks. We had an opportunity to see that we do have a wash bay within the garage that after every time the salt trucks are out salting our roads, they come back, they wash the salt off the trucks to try to increase the useful life of those vehicles for another year or two by removing the salt from those vehicles. It turned out to be a great project. It seems like we accomplished our goal with respect to having the vehicles come inside rather than keeping some of the vehicles outside year-round, which the weather just adds additional wear and tear on those vehicles, and it was becoming more costly for the city to try to maintain those vehicles over time, instead of just spending the money upfront and getting those vehicles under roof for the winter season. It also saves time in the winter season because the vehicles have radiant heat, where the vehicles are warm when the operators come in to take them out on the road. They don't have to worry about trying to heat them up prior to going out on the road and trying to remove all the snow on some of the packer vehicles that are left outside. So we appreciate the administration's help in accomplishing this goal that I think we all had on council, to help improve the useful life of our vehicles in the street department and in the sanitation department. Any additional comments by council? Would a clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Burdell Ware?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-12 passes six zero.
Resolution 23-12, a resolution supporting the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT's, request to move the urban paving of State Route 18 and State Route 57 project to fiscal year 2013.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Patton?
Thank you. Currently, ODOT has on schedule the repaving of 18 and 57, actually all the way through town, for their fiscal year 2014. We were contacted by them a couple of weeks ago to ask if there's any desire in the city to move that project forward one year to fiscal year 2013. We submitted it to council. We would like to support that because we think the resurfacing, the sooner the better. There is a cost commitment. The city, per state law, is responsible for 20% of the cost to construction. ODOT's current estimates would put the city's share of those costs at a little over $565,000. This was planned for our 2014 budget, but with some savings we've had in a lot of our projects, favorable bid prices, that money will be available in 2013, so there shouldn't be any stress or any project that would have to be moved out to accommodate that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would the clerk, please, call the roll on a resolution?
Burdell Ware?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Resolution 23-12 passes six zero.
Ordinance 24-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and to award a contract due to successful bidder for the extension of the water and sanitary sewer services to the proposed new facility at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Patton?
Thank you. As noted in the title, this will be to extend water and sanitary sewer to the new facility, the modular units that are going to be installed to support the crews and staff related to the helicopter, medical helicopter company.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would the clerk, please, call the roll on the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Burdell Ware?
Yes.
Ordinance 24-12 passes six zero.
Ordinance 25-12, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 9-12, passed January 23, 2012, relative to a memorandum of understanding to provide fixed route public transportation services within the city of Medina for a period of January 1, 2012, through December 31, 2012.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance, well, ordinance 912 was passed at the last council meeting, January 23, and when the agreement to -- this provides public transit, the city's share of public transit. When that authorization was taken to finance, the deputy finance director noticed that they had billed us for that in July of last year, and we passed an ordinance and paid that. So she astutely noted that we'd already paid for the January 1, 2012, to December 2012 time period, and we're repealing that ordinance with this ordinance so as not to duplicate the payment.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would the clerk, please, call the roll on the ordinance?
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Burdell Ware?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Ordinance 25-12 passes six zero.
Ordinance 26-12, an ordinance amending ordinance number 172-11, passed December 12, 2011, amendments to the 2012 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first one is to use some of the electrical aggregation funds for an economic development project. The second one is to handle the pass-through of the JED income tax dollars to the JED. And then the next two are the previously discussed airport improvement. The last three are all transfers.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would the clerk, please, call the roll on the ordinance?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Burdell Ware?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Ordinance 26-12 passes six zero.
Council comments, I have a few. I just wanted to give you an update. The -- just prior Monday, we had a first council of the whole ward meeting. It was in Ward 1 at Fire Station Number 1 on Reagan Parkway. We had some participants. I think we need to advertise a little better to get the word out to the other residents in the different wards when we go visit those wards. But I'll transfer it over to Ms. Burdell Ware to give an update, since she's the Ward 1 council representative.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to touch base, kind of let you all know what happened at our meeting. We probably had a lot more administration than we actually had Ward 1 residents, but it was nice to see the people who came out. It was a good opportunity to interact with everyone and not be on camera and things like that, just be able to talk to everyone one-on-one. We did get a lot of participation from the people who did show. There was some comments about some wanting some sidewalks in some certain areas, the light changes that have gone into effect, things like that. I spent the majority of my portion of the meeting discussing the improvements that have been made to my ward specifically. From year 2006 to 2011, the projects completed or under construction totaled approximately $5.4 million. So while you may not see, may not notice each project that's going on, our ward is getting quite a bit of attention and will continue to do so. One part, the next part of the meeting, rather, talked about budget estimates for future Ward 1 projects, and those were over $11 million. Those include the pavement that's coming up in the industrial section of our ward. But many of those things were for amenities within our community. We have a splash pad coming up. We have additional ADA curb ramps coming in. There's annual street repairs, water line replacement, many things that go unnoticed, but they're all being funneled into our ward for us to enjoy. In addition to that, we specifically discussed some of the improvements and amenities that have either been constructed or are in the process of being constructed in Ray Mallett Park, which, of course, is in our ward. We had the basketball court was resealed and dedicated. We had new playground equipment put in our park. We had some fencing replaced within our park. We will be getting the splash pad in our park. A lot of these things are being funded by grant dollars, which are specifically dedicated to our ward based on certain financial eligibility requirements. But administration, I know I worked with Sandy Davis, who put in an inordinate amount of time and effort to get us funds to the exclusion of the rest of the city so as to speak based upon the people within our specific ward. And, you know, we were -- we funded the battered women's shelter. There was some monies put there. We do the public transportation, the busing system. We put a significant amount of money there annually. We did chairs at the senior center, which is in our ward. There are a number of things that we get to the exclusion of the rest of the wards of the city based upon the people in our ward. So to the extent we continue to get the grant dollars, and they are specifically for Ward 1, if we're having meetings on those, make your best effort to attend. We have held meetings in the past specifically designed to talk about how we're going to spend those monies in our community, in our, just our little ward section. So come, because your voice makes a difference there. Everyone that comes to those meetings is heard. We vote on those things. This is definitely your opportunity to get what you need, get what you think our city needs. Lastly, for anyone who's not aware, I announced at my ward meeting within our specific ward that I will unfortunately be resigning from council based upon residency requirements. As many of you may know, I was approximately nine months pregnant when I ran for this term, and unfortunately, our fourth child has -- we just need more room, and we need it quickly. We did not anticipate the -- how much more room we would need with that fourth kid and just the four-bedroom house. So unfortunately, I will be moving to Valley City. It's kind of bittersweet for me. Obviously, I will have considerably more land and a bigger home, but also I will be leaving the community that I do love. I still get to remain here to some degree. My office is on the square, so I'll be here darn near every day of the week. I just won't be able to be the ward councilperson. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burdell Ware. We're going to miss you, but not to hurry things up, but there is a vacancy on council, and applications are due by March 15 for the Ward 1 seat. And you can either go to the clerk's office to get an application or go to our website, which is www.madinaoh.org.